In the coming days and weeks. Thank you.
Councilmen, are there any programs in place to help homebound individuals access COVID-19 testing?
All right, homebound individuals in relation to testing. Any ideas or thoughts on that?
Is that similar to the question that was just previous to ask people who can't leave their residence?
Similar, yes, and this was specific to testing. So maybe the home kit availability would help. Could someone answer the question about how we can get a testing kit to someone's home?
From the fire department, I know not specific toward home, but we had a program where we were testing these skilled nursing facilities, providing test kits, and the staff would do the testing there. So I'm assuming that something similar that could be possibly discussed.
Yes, and what we'll do, we'll put the information for home test kits. There is a way to order one and have one mailed to you or delivered to your home. So we'll put that information on the comment section.
Councilmen, with Dodger Stadium's transition to a vaccination site, have other locations been able to accommodate the increased demand in testing?
Okay, this is in relation to other locations to accommodate the increased demand in testing. We went over that a little bit in the presentation, but perhaps Commander Hardaway, you could reiterate the sites beyond Dodger Stadium for testing and/or vaccines.
Yeah, so because we converted Dodger Stadium to a 100% vax, Lincoln Park, we have those surrounding fix sites, Lincoln Park, and don't forget, we have our mobile team units that will hook up the slack, mobile stationos, and near and surrounding areas to support those efforts for the people who still want to get tested.
All right, and for everyone listening, we will put up on our comment section all the information on how to access these answers to your questions as well. We have time for some more questions.
Councilman, what are the greatest challenges to creating supplies of vaccine?
Greatest challenges to creating adequate supplies of vaccines? Just the process that was lacking severely right around the holidays into the new Biden administration, and how those efforts have ramped up significantly since President Biden took office. And so, Commander Hardaway, if you're still there, you popped off the screen, maybe you have information about that. It looks like you started to say something there. I think we might have lost him temporarily. But stay tuned for more information on that, because we know that from what we've heard, the Biden administration intends on administering 1.5 million vaccine doses per day, and they're at about roughly 1.3, from what I understand. And so hopefully, they'll ramp up to that 1.5 million per day, and of course, we will benefit from that proportionally.
Councilman, this is our last question of this edition of Councilmember in your corner. How can we, in our private lives, make sure that our families and friends are comfortable with taking the vaccine and also ensure that it's distributed equitably?
So how can we, in our private lives, feel comfortable with our family actually receiving the vaccine and making sure that they are administered equitably and fairly? So I want to thank Dr. Gonzalez for addressing the higher proportions of infection rates in Black and Brown communities. That's a real issue, and also the safety and efficacy when we have a very, very checkered history in this country as it relates to safe vaccinations in Black and Brown communities. So Dr. Gonzalez, would you like to expand on that a little bit more?
Sure, and I really want to echo what Jenna mentioned too, which is, you know, for those who have any sort of qualms understandably about the safety of the vaccine for themselves, it's really important for them to really just do their own research and ask those people who are informed, not rely on Facebook or YouTube or Instagram posts from random individuals, but actually ask someone with, you know, a scientific background, a medical background, your doctor, your pharmacist, somebody that is in a more official capacity, has the background to be able to educate and explain to you in words, maybe that you can feel more comfortable with, and from someone that you can trust, about whether or not this vaccine is right for you personally. But overall, like I had alluded, or not alluded, I had mentioned in my earlier talking portion where the current vaccines that are available did include people of color in the studies, precisely to try and understand whether there were going to be any concerns for these populations to get the vaccine. And what was found was, in fact, they're effective and safe for as much for these communities of color as they were for all of the other individuals who participated in these early studies.
Thank you, Dr. Jenna. Would you like to add?
Yeah, I'd love to. I know from Kaiser Permanente's standpoint, I know that this is a huge effort on behalf of what we are doing to make sure that we're getting out into these communities of color and educating them with people that they trust and with people that look like them. I know I mentioned Helen at the very beginning of my presentation, but she has been really a beautiful force for us in that Latinx community to help them understand that, you know, she was one of those who was really trepidatious about the vaccine, and then she became first in line. She really did her research, and she did really solid, science-based research, not, to your point, Dr. Gonzalez, research from, you know, random Facebook posts that weren't from credible sources, but true, scientific-based research. And so I think that that's really important for us as an organization as well, and for the community at large, to identify those individuals who can, you know, go out to those communities and be that strong voice and be that strong trusted force. And I know that we're doing that across the board. One of the physicians who received the first dose that same day is a Black physician, and he has been an equal, strong voice for us in the Black community. And so as we look at that really equitable distribution of the administration of that vaccine, it's very important for us to identify how we can be that driver and how we can get into these communities, where these individuals are, whether it's going into, you know, churches or barber shops or whatever that looks like. We're really trying to make a concerted effort to do so and have that educational opportunity with them, with people that they can trust. So from our standpoint, I know that that's happening, and I think that that's happening, you know, beyond us, but it's definitely something that I can speak to on behalf of Kaiser Permanente.
Thank you, Jenna. And, yes, oh, please.
I'm sorry, if I can just add, so in addition to asking someone that you personally know and trust, you know, to the degree that you trust the Department of Public Health and our ability to, you know, present the science in a way that hopefully is understandable, I'd say our website, vaccinate la county dot com, and in Spanish, vacuna de los angeles dot com, are really excellent resources for a lot of really commonly asked questions, and where we dispel myths, and where we, you know, highlight the importance of watching out to make sure that you don't become a victim of a scam. You know, these times where we've got such limited supplies of vaccine, really makes for fertile ground for individuals who are desperate to get vaccine, to fall victim to some of these scams. And so we have scam information, you know, misinformation, myth rumor information, and commonly asked questions right there on our website, and simple and easily to understand language, in my humble opinion. So I think that's another very good resource for individuals to be able to access some information that is true from a credible source.
Thank you so much. And we will publish again all three of these sources, LEFD, Kaiser Permanente, and County Health. Those are three very reliable sources of information that I urge everyone to really pay attention to and trust, and let that be your go-to source, and not rumor and innuendo from social media. Commander Hardaway, any last comments you'd like to make?
No, I'll piggyback on what the other two presenters said about the last question. Along with everything, we also like to use the demographic data and the positive rates in those most vulnerable communities to assist in getting that word out, you know, targeting churches and community groups, just like they said, for those people who don't have access.
Wonderful, thank you. And lastly, I'd like to close with this. I hope that Nurse Cordova realizes that she is part of history. That image, her photograph of taking that very first COVID vaccine will be in the Smithsonian Institute at some point. She will be in the history books. So I want to thank all of the ICU nurses, all of the first responders, all of our healthcare industry professionals, because you have gotten us all through this unprecedented time during the pandemic, when everyone has been fear-stricken and in great distress and uncertainty. We've lost loved ones. We've had loved ones become ill and recover, and some who haven't recovered. So it's our first responders, our firefighters, our medics, our, those in the medical field, who have really helped keep us lifted through this. So we will forever be indebted to your services, and that is forever, and so we are forever grateful. So thank you, everyone, for this extraordinary panel and for joining me today. We're thankful to have such capable partners in our efforts to manage this pandemic. I especially want to thank the crew here at the City's Channel 35 Studios for making today possible. Please sign up for my weekly newsletter on cd13.com for information on our next council member in your corner. Thank you, everyone, and God bless all the first responders. Thank you.
We've been through a lot, Los Angeles, and we're getting through it together. COVID-19 has presented many unprecedented challenges, and Angelinos continue to rise to the occasion. With safer-at-home restrictions being adjusted and relaxed, we must be safe while we begin to enjoy some of the things this beautiful city has to offer. Keep in mind that you are still safer at home, especially if you are over 65 and have a chronic condition. Remember to always practice good health habits, such as wearing a mask that covers both your nose and your mouth, and distance when possible. Also, wash your hands frequently with soap and water. Stay home when you are sick. Cover your mouth with a tissue when coughing and sneezing. Take advantage of the City of LA's testing sites to ensure you are doing your part to stop the spread of COVID-19, and when you can, get the vaccine. As we make progress towards defeating this virus, continue to prepare and review household plans so you are able to take quick action if you or a loved one gets sick. For more information, visit corona/virus.la.
The Los Angeles City Council, today is Tuesday, February 9th. I'm Nury Martinez, the president of the City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Councilmember Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaino.
Here.
Sadio. Councilmember Sadio. De Leon.
Here.
Harris Dawson. Councilmember Harris Dawson. Corretz.
Present.
Krikorian. Krikorian. Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell. Councilmember O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Here.
Ramon.
Here.
Ridley Thomas. Thank you. Rodriguez.
Here.
Twelve members present and accorum. Madam President.
First order of business?
Madam President, Councilmember Sadio for the record.
Mr. Sadio has joined the meeting.
Thirteen members. Thank you.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of February 3rd.
Mr. Lee moves, and Mr. O'Farrell seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Rodriguez moves, and Mr. Buscaino seconds next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Mr. Buscaino, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance, sir?
With great honor, Madam President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, what's next? Let's go ahead and run through the agenda.
Madam President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order next.
There is a request to continue item 37 for two weeks to February 23.
Without objection, that will be the order.
Items 1 through 28 are items for which public hearings have been held. The Budget and Finance Committee report for item 4 has been submitted and uploaded to Council File Number 13-1646-S7. Items 29 through 41 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us, members. Do you wish to call any of the items special?
Madam President?
Mr., I'm not sure who's speaking. Mr. Price, is that you?
Yes, yes, Madam President, it is I. I need to recuse myself from item 33 due to my wife's business DRA, who has a former client who is an applicant on this matter.
All right, thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, there's been a request for Mr. Price to recuse himself on item 33. Members, any other specials? Mr. De Leon?
Thank you very much, Madam President. This is file item number 32, and I'd like to make a following technical correction to recommend number 3, and replace it with transfer $250,000 in the AB 1290 Fund, number 53P, account number 281214. That's the City 14 Development Project Services. Be transferred appropriated to a new account in the Engineering Special Services Fund, number 682, Department 50, entitled Housing Standard Plans for Initial Design Related Expenses. And that is, again, file item number 32.
Is there a second to your technical amendment?
Second.
A second by Mr. Buscaino. Members, any other specials?
Thank you, Joe.
Kristina, Madam Clerk.
Madam President, for a public comment, as indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. Finally, when you hear the last four digits of your phone number, press star 6. And again, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. Finally, when you hear the last four digits of your phone number, press star 6.
To members of the public calling in, when it's your turn, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes. Because this is a special meeting, there will be no general public comment. We'll tell you when your time's up.
What?
When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Please make clear which item you're on. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're on topic, you'll get one brief warning from me or the president. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic or again stray off topic, the president will cut you off, and you'll forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. We'll take 40 minutes total of public comment. All items are open for public comment. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, as soon as you hear someone announce the last four digits of your phone number or other identifying information, if you're using a blocked number, you're live in the council meeting. Please Please press star 6 immediately to unmute yourself and tell us which items you'd like to speak on. We understand you may also be listening to the item, to the meeting on your computer, channel 35 or other device. If that's the case, as soon as you hear yourself announced, please immediately turn down the volume on the other devices because there's a time delay and we'll get feedback. Also, however, please keep one item or one ear on the phone. Uh, because of the time delay, we want you to hear us as soon as we announce you so that you can immediately press star 6 to unmute yourself so that we don't think that you're no longer on the line. Thank you very much, Madam President. We're ready to take public comment.
Just go ahead and take the first speaker.
Caller with a phone number ending in 7059, please press star 6. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Zachary Warmer, calling for Agenda Item Number 6.
You have a minute, please begin.
Good morning, Councilmember Zachary Warmer, Public Affairs Lead at the Downtown Women's Center, calling today to urge your support for item number 6, the issuance of bonds for DWC's permanent supportive housing project, OT's Place, located in Van Nuys. As the nation's first provider of permanent supportive housing for women and with a 42-year track record of supporting unhoused and housing insecure women in Skid Row, DWC is proud to be expanding our PSH services into other parts of the city as women's homelessness is not a crisis confined to one neighborhood or one council district. OT's Place, set to break ground this spring, will bring 45 units of critically needed permanent supportive housing for women who are chronically unhoused and for survivors of domestic violence. Central to DWC's mission is the unyielding belief that only by investing in permanent housing solutions can we ever hope to truly eradicate homelessness. With hundreds of additional permanent housing units in the development pipeline across LA County, DWC is striving to embody this value. We wish to extend our heartfelt thanks to Council President Martinez and her staff for their critical and unwavering support for this project and we look forward to continuing to work with this council to provide permanent housing for our unhoused neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with a phone number ending in 1457, please press star 6. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Dan Langford with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters and I want to talk about the approval of the ONI project at the old times' mayor building.
Speaker, which item on the agenda is that?
I'm sorry, I don't have the, the number in front of me, but I understand that on the agenda today is the approval to go ahead with the, for ONI development.
Very good. I think it's number nine. I think it's number nine. Go ahead. You have a minute.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, here we are again. A city that has issues that we talk about and talk about how to solve them. And, uh, we're here and it looks like we're going to rubber stamp another development that doesn't address any of the city's problems. You have a developer that refuses to negotiate with labor to ensure that it's good, middle-class, paying jobs. But more importantly than that, no requirement for local hire, no requirement for skilled and trained workforce. If we want to bring the residents of LA out of poverty, if we want to bring people that are living on the streets into respectability and give them an opportunity to change their lives, we have to have responsible developers agree to solve that problem and not add to that problem. This project is going to be another, uh, project that's going to, uh, be hundreds of millions of dollars and we're going to have people sleeping in front of that project.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker.
Call in user 1, please press star 6. Call in user 1, please press star 6. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
CL, items, uh, 5 and 6, please.
Sure, you have two minutes. Please begin.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I, you know, I'd just like to say hello to Noori Martinez after why she canceled Friday meetings for nearly a year when every major and even minor, smallest city in this country, New York, Austin, the Bay Area, they're all able to meet everybody without violating the city charter. Your district is dying at a greater rate and the routine community exploit as well is also dying at a greater rate. I'd like to say hello to Mark Ridley Thomas and urge him to leave the city immediately to see his hotels and house people. I'd like to just say hello to $150 million being redirected to help working class people in the city, but the council is so disgraceful that that money might revert to LAPD. So I'd like you all to just say goodbye to any future you think that you have that you'll reach off the back of Los Angeles voters. Fast food workers are on strike today, more oncoming, more upcoming, apprehended people, not developers and then we'll discuss you all.
Thank you, Speaker.
Call in user 2, please press star 6. Call in user 2, please press star 6.
Speaker, if you think, uh, you're dialing with a blocked number and you think it may be you, please press star 6 right in, right now.
Yeah.
Caller with a phone number ending in 7186, please press star 6. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, hi, my name is Alex and I'm going to be speaking on Agenda Item 30.
You have a minute, please begin.
Good morning, only to councilmembers Ramon and Bonin. I'd like to just say hello to everyone else on the council. For the rest of you, I'm going to yell because amidst all the Brown Act violations you continue to commit, the LAPD just announced they're going to try to take back the 150 million that is, please stop moving the mic, that was supposed to be used for Care First. Uh, by the way, 165 unhoused people died in January alone. What the fuck is it going to take for you to take that money and seize the hotels? You can get 150, you can get all that money given back by FEMA, 100%. What the hell is it going to take for you to take some action? The blood of all these people is on your hands. Stop sitting around canceling meetings, actually do something or else you are going to have hell to pay. That's, I yield my time, fuck you.
Next speaker.
Caller with a phone number ending in 1006, please press star 6. Caller with, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hey, uh, it's Rob Quan. I'd like to speak on items 9, 36, and 30.
Sure, so you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
Um, yeah, for item number 9, ONI development, I thought we were putting a pause on all these projects tied to Jose Rizal and that scandal. Uh, but I guess we're just in that see no evil, hear no evil, speak no evil situation, um, with that. But, uh, for item 36, I just want to say, you know, this is a Chinatown bid. Why are we putting up banners telling people to patronize shops and restaurants? Um, there's a pandemic. Uh, maybe we should put up signs telling people to wear masks. That seems like a much better street banner program. Um, anytime Chinatown bid comes up, it's worth mentioning George Yu's brutal and inhumane treatment of the unhoused. You should all stop taking his money, stop letting him fundraise for your campaigns. Shout out to Marcy Eric Dawson. I wonder why he's trying to curry a favor with the Plum Committee. For item 30, the local emergency, uh, I think it's worth talking about Project Room Key now that you're getting 100% reimbursement instead of 75%. All of a sudden, you're feeling a whole lot more ambitious. Our problem before was not money, it was a lack of political courage in actually getting the hotels. You haven't used your emergency power to accommodate hotels. We have an empty hospital, the St. Vincent. We have one closing down, the Olympia Medical Center. Who's that shit? Uh, I also want to note that it's funny that I called in from two lines and my other one, I was third in the queue and didn't get called on, but the second number I called in, I did get called on. It's just indicative of this mannequins that are happening at this council and in Noori Martinez. I wonder who's actually helping facilitate from the city clerk's office. It's really weird how this queue is being managed.
Which item are you on, Mr. Quan?
What's that? This is related to the local emergency and this council's reluctance to actually have a meaningful upholding of the Brown Act like the governor's executive order asks, a good faith effort to uphold the Brown Act. Uh, council hasn't updated any of the rules. So, you know, I'll, I'll take, uh, let the rest of the time go to, I'll yield my time. Want to make sure some others will get in. Have I said?
Thank you, Mr. Quan.
Caller with the phone number ending in 4708, please press star 6. Caller with the phone number ending in 4708, please press star 6. Caller with the phone number ending in 4024, please press star 6. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
I'd like to speak on, no, I can't speak on 1 through 28, they're already held. But I'd like to speak on special wife price, 33. I'd like to speak on item 09. I'd like to speak on item 30, 36.
Fine, you have three minutes, Mr. Herman, I believe. Go ahead.
Don't call me Herman, I'm a puppet. We already know not to pause on development. Rubber stamp by responsible developers is only simply no support for women homeless. Support of housing don't exist. Have you not looked into the streets of Los Angeles? More specifically, the city of Los Angeles must be accessible and favorable to people with disabilities. Title 3 of the ADA requires that all public accommodations such nonprofit agencies and corrupted politicians provide service to community members after a disaster. Cowboy disaster, hotels are a disaster, mines and restaurants are a disaster, no mask, you jackass. All other private business provide goods and services like markets going out to business for $15 an hour, you son of a bitches. Must comply with the basic rules to protect the rights of people and all the speakers whose civil rights are violated under the Brown Act. 54950 to 54963. Yeah? Such disabilities fully include our community life. Support homeless people, support cowboy spending, not the 78 million stolen money now come for, let alone the 700 billion to come deficit by Eric Garcetti who no longer follows Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act to support homeless people, more specifically. Now to my general public comment, you stupid motherfuckers.
Uh, sorry, Mr. Spindler, there is no general public comment today. This is special meeting. So if you're done with the items, thank you very much.
No, 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 I'm going to go to the special. And my name is not Spindler, it's Puppet, you fucking asshole, stop interrupting me.
So, Mr. Spindler, you're not on topic, so, and you're clearly done with your comments. So we'll move on to the next speaker. Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 5332, please press star 6. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, uh, good morning. My name is James Okazaki and I wanted to speak on item number 14 having to do with, uh, naming of the intersection of First and San Pedro and Judge John Isle Street to
Go ahead.
Rose Oji Square. And Rose, you know, used to be a city employee, where he, she worked there for almost 20 years for Mayor Bradley and I knew her since then. Uh, and, uh, we worked together on several projects. Uh, more recently on the Tuna Canyon Detention Station Coalition, uh, project to establish the, uh, historical cultural site over in the Hanga Canyon area. But anyway, uh, I wanted to say that Rose is very deserving of this recognition and it, this intersection is really historic for Little Tokyo. Uh, we named Judge John Isle, uh, back about 25 years ago and he was the first Japanese-American judge. And, and Rose being an attorney, uh, involved with civil rights, criminal justice and social justice, it is, is appropriate that we have her connected in Little Tokyo to Judge John Isle Street and First and San Pedro as well.
Thank you, Speaker.
Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 4549, please press star 6. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello?
Yes, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Roxanne. I was calling to speak on Agenda Item Number 29 in regards to the annual litigation cost report as well as the DA lawsuit.
Sure, please, you have a minute. Please go ahead.
Okay, while I recognize that the, that the county council has requested the filing of the annual litigation cost report to be counted two weeks to February 23, 2021, I'd like to highlight that the litigation cost of the sheriffs and probation departments for fiscal, for the fiscal year. Just this board meeting alone, the board is hearing three sheriff's department settlements, Agenda Item 51, 53, and 54, totaling to over 850,000 in settlements for two car accidents. Um, and a use of force case, um, in regards to even JALF versus the city, the, the county of Los Angeles. This is an egregious amount of money for taxpayers to be spending bailing out the sheriff's department, um, for their violent misconduct, conduct. The sheriff's department has long been the primary driver for liability costs for Los Angeles county. Of the 148.5 million Los Angeles county spent on liability in, um, 2019 to 2019, the sheriff's department is responsible for over 55% of those costs. Um, the exception for settlements alone cost 18.55 million and account for 31% of all settlements paid by the county.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1148, please press star 6. Caller with the phone number ending in 1148, please press star 6. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, I'd like to speak on all available items, please.
Sure, you have three minutes. Please begin, Speaker.
Thank you, sir. Apologize to Ms. Autry for disrespect, Martinez. Uh, item number one, uh, the mayor's confirmation of affordable housing commission of Mr. Buchanan. Uh, this mayor should be stripped of all confirmation appoint, appointments because he's a disgrace, a total disgrace. He did not call, uh, the homeless excrement, but his analogy was lower than life itself. A testament to a very stupid person. Uh, item number three posing, uh, postponing salary increases for city employees. When you've given Dawson $2 million because of your vote trading for luxury offices, he has two of them still open. Two, uh, for, uh, one for 17,000 a month and the other for 10,000 a month. That's $27,500 a month, 330,000 dollars a year for this guy, luxury offices. And you're cutting city employees' salaries. Are you happy city employees? Are you happy city of LA residents? When this corrupt council gives each other these, this type of expenditures for nothing? He wouldn't know how to create a job if his mother slapped him in the face. This is Dawson. Number five, um, Mariposa Lily Affordable Housing Complex is 13 million bucks. You don't say how many units, but it's 40 units, 325,000 dollars a unit. Uh, number six is, uh, the same kind of project, 245,000 dollars a unit. If the county can build these units for 200,000 dollars or less, why is, why has this council spent all the money of the city of LA on the HHH on campaign contribution for 700,000 dollars a unit, 500 to 700,000 dollars a unit? For four hundred square feet. Disgraceful, corrupt Los Angeles City Council. Number twenty-nine, properties from REIT. Look, all of these items, every one of them will receive a yes vote, all votes on this Los Angeles corrupt council are yes votes. It's called vote trading, so what are they sitting there for? It's all theater for stupid people, that's you and me, public. It's all theater. These people have no intention of stopping homelessness. They're making too much money, campaign contributions from the developers, from the, uh, the consultants, from the unions.
Thank you, Speaker.
Next speaker?
Caller with the phone number ending in seven seven one nine, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Uh, okay, it's Eric Previn, and I would like to speak on, uh, all of the agenda items, and I'd like to make a general public comment.
No, Mr. Previn, you may speak on the items, but there's no general public comment today, so you have three minutes on the items, please begin.
Thank you for putting that on the record, thank you. Um, I'd like to thank Dale Goldsmith, who is the lobbyist, uh, working with the Oni Group. And I'd like to talk about the Oni Group's plans to put up like eleven hundred or so luxury condos over at the Times Mirror place right across the street from City Hall. Goldsmith has been involved in AEG project, and USC project, and the Century Plaza Hotel project, I mean, this guy runs one of the best lobbyist land use firms in downtown L.A. And they took a payment from AEG for nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one quarter, if you can believe it. Just for helping to move things along with the help of Mitch Englander and the gang at Plum back then, which was Jose Weezer. Now we have a new freshed up, freshened up group. But this project was pushed through one day by John Lee, uh, and Greg Smith and those guys when they were, they were holding committee meetings, Fable will remember, all at the same time at one P.M. So that people couldn't speak on the items in committee and then were denied at council, which is the city's regular and corrupt practice. So this was one of those items, and we came down to a big, uh, standoff, and they wouldn't let us speak on the item, it was just astonishing and sad. So, I was thinking that, you know, item, moving to the, uh, item about the street banner campaign, which I'm obviously very excited about out in Tarzana. I wanted to, because it's about encouraging participation. And the other day at Plum, they were trying to encourage participation, but unfortunately Marquise Harris Dawson was at the chair, and Mr. Ridley Thomas was laughing in the background, and Gil Sadio had to go to the dentist because they were overturning a historical landmark designation that had been recommended by everybody in order to put more luxury condoms.
So, Mr. Previn, which item are you on? I'm confused.
Now, the problem is, is that they were also continuing a bunch of items, and Mr. Harris Dawson was told
Mr. Previn, what item are you on?
Comments on any item on a special meeting, like today, special meeting.
Mr. Previn, which item are you on?
But the problem is
Mr. Previn.
That he denied public the right to comment on the items that they were continuing, again, in violation of the special meeting law, so I had to bring them all the way.
Okay, I think we're gonna cut you off if you don't clearly get back on an item.
Let's move on to the next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in eight nine one nine, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in eight nine one nine, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Uh, yeah, hi, this is Lynn McFadden, I'd like to speak on item thirty.
You have a minute, please begin.
Um, yeah, I just wanna start by saying, um, I think it's kind of, you know, hilarious that you guys are pushing for this local emergency while you're acting like there's nothing out of the ordinary happening. You have no urgency to your actions, um, I would just like to say hello to Mark Ridley Thomas, who would, instead of, uh, doing anything on the homeless committee and actually pushing through Bannon and, uh, Ms. Rahm's motion that would actually help people, is spending his time, um, pushing a tax shelter with Amazon and the LAPD in the form of a volunteer initiative.
So, Speaker, I don't really see how this is item thirty.
That doesn't solve anything, um, and actually is just, you know, a way to solicit donations. So I think that you guys could
So, Speaker, I really don't see how this is item thirty, please get back on item thirty.
Oh, no, it is item thirty, it's about how you guys are not treating the local emergency that you say is happening with the urgency of a local emergency. More than five people a day are dying on our streets in the middle of a pandemic, and you people are doing nothing.
Next speaker?
Caller with the phone number ending in seven zero zero six, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
It's the world famous hotel clinic, Pafita Beach.
Speaker, which items do you wanna speak on?
See?
Which items do you wanna speak on, Speaker?
Um, nine through thirty-eight.
You have three minutes, begin, please stay on the items.
And forty-one through ninety-four, please. Oh, shall we go to number one? What, number one? Nathan Bachman? His name is Nathan Bachman, nobody speaks that name with an N, it's a typo. Or he's retarded, one of the two. Then we hit on number two. Oh, we like it, number two. Prohibiting entry upon the Venice Canal? No, we are against that. I have my little paddle canoe, and I go through those Venice Canals, and I stop, and I bang on the doors for money. And they make about fifty dollars a day, very good, I do that two times a week. Please let me continue to beg during COVID.
Speaker.
Number three, animals, classification is. Number four. Uh, I don't know what the fuck this is, I will wait for. Number five, the great future mayor of Los Angeles, Gilbert, he's the deal, the P stands for Tiberius. Yes, we support his good work. Number six, it's from the fastest of all the council members.
What about Ridley Thomas?
Oh, the second fastest is, we will support number six.
So, this is Mr. Spindler, you dialed in already today.
Number seven, I don't know. Number eight is number four, please.
Now, caller with the phone number ending in two two eight three, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Harris Rosenbloom, uh, speaking on items thirty-one and thirty-two.
Yes, you have two minutes, please begin.
On behalf of the Los Angeles Business Council, we would like to express our support for items thirty-one and thirty-two, two motions that are part of Councilmember De Leon's away home package. The necessity to refocus housing and homelessness solutions within the city of Los Angeles is clear as the crisis continues to worsen, and staying housed remains out of reach for far too many people. Uh, issues of lengthy approval processes for development projects in general, owner, onerous requirements for temporary shelters, limited zone capacity for affordable housing, failure of a shared vision with communities on the need for increased housing, and an inability to creatively repurpose existing land have significantly exacerbated the growing housing and homelessness crisis. Just in the last year, the crisis, uh, has only worsened due to COVID-nineteen and related job losses, and we know that more people fall into homelessness than exit out on a daily basis. Uh, we support Councilmember De Leon's comprehensive recommendations in away home, uh, on how to strengthen our focus on creative housing solutions and process to ensure that by two thousand twenty-five, we can accommodate thousands of Angelinos that are left without shelter or housing. Uh, Los Angeles needs to retool the process for creating housing in a more efficient and cost-effective manner, while also focusing on moving people off the street into all forms of housing as quickly as possible. These two motions to establish a streamlined post-entitlement permitting process for expediting supportive and affordable housing projects, and to develop a limited set of standard plans for modular multifamily homeless and affordable housing, bungalow courts and ADUs, while just a piece of a more comprehensive package will push L.A. in the right direction. Uh, we will need to urgently mobilize the city's efforts around changes that will have the biggest impact in the shortest period of time and for the most people who need it. Uh, the L.A., L.A.B.C. thanks you for your steadfast leadership on this issue, and we are excited about continuing to work together towards addressing the critical need to provide housing opportunities for all Angelinos. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in two nine seven four, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
This is Gazelle Yashofar, and I want to speak on all the items, but particularly item thirty.
So you have three minutes for all the items, please begin.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to first begin with item thirty and how it's impacting our kids and the reopening of school, and I just wanna say that I support L.A. Councilman Jobo Ciano on his plan and effort to sue L.A.U.S.D. to return for students back on campus because they are, they need our voices, and they need our help and support. And without being on campus, they are just hurting over and over and again, and it's not fair to them, they're not getting the education that they need.
Speaker, this seems pretty far away from the declaration of emergency, why don't we get back on the
I'm sorry?
It seems pretty far removed from item thirty, so please kind of move back onto the item, thank you.
Well, not really, because it's no longer an emergency, because without the teachers going back onto campus and our children going back onto campus, they're not learning. We're creating more of an education gap, we're creating more harm to our kids. And without them going back to school, then how are we going to plan for their future? We are at such a disadvantage, L.A. County specifically, if all these other counties and all these other states are similarly situated as us, can have their kids back on campus, why can't we? And if it takes a lawsuit against L.A.U.S.D., then we should do it.
So, I, I really do think this is pretty far from renewing the declaration of emergency, Speaker, please move on to another item.
I understand, but someone needs to hear us, and this is the only way that we can get our voices heard.
I understand you want us to hear it, please move on to the agenda items.
Then this is it. The council members should hear us, should hear our voices, we are standing strong behind our students.
Okay, so, Speaker, we're gonna cut you off if you don't get, move on to the agenda items, you understand?
But that should be part of the agenda.
Uh, it's not part of the agenda, so I suggest we move on to the next speaker.
Next speaker?
Caller with the phone number ending in six one zero zero, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Uh, my name is Dorothy Reich, and I'd like to speak on items thirty-one and thirty-two.
Sure, you have two minutes.
And I would just practice by saying that I am an elected member of the L.A. County Democratic Party Central Committee, elected by forty thousand of my constituents, representing eighty-fifty. I wanna thank all representative Mike Fawn and for the great work he does, but today I'm speaking about Kevin De Leon. Who was forced to pay, not forced, but who, who, out of the kindness of his heart, paid hundreds of dollars to house homeless women in the pour, because, in the pouring rain, when he and Judge Carter had ordered tents to be brought to the parking lot of the Downtown Women's Center, which we own, the city owns that. The, the people in power would not allow the tents to be set up and would not let the women in. So they had to go and, and put them in motels. Then they came back and wanted to charge an exorbitant amount of money to allow them to put the tents back.
Speaker, I, Speaker, again, I think we're pretty far from the agenda item, you said you wanted to talk on item thirty-one and thirty-two.
I, so the agenda item is, so I would like to support process for, um, developing standards for modular and multifamily homeless and affordable housing, bungalow courts, and accessory dwelling units. And I would also like you to keep an eye on the cost, because I believe that, uh, the city is being overcharged in a spectacular way on the building of these units. The people in the valley managed to build these units for three thousand dollars each. Uh, that's, that's my comment.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in two seven six seven, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, my name is Richard Schave, S.C.H.A.V.E., and I'd like to speak on agenda item number nine.
Please begin, you have a minute.
Thank you, my name is Richard Schave, I wrote the historic cultural monument application for Times Mirror Square, which is now before full council to approve. It's E.I.R. that passed through Plum, and I am going to mention in passing, because I know it will pass through this full council, that this is a real mistake that councilman, former councilmember Jose Weezer has intrinsically tarnished any land use decisions during his term, both as a city council member for Council District Fourteen, which Times Mirror Squirt's sent, and his role as the head of Plum. This item was passing through Plum as his office was raided by the FBI, and throughout the process through Plum and the Planning Commission with the E.I.R., he was subsequently indicted and will go on trial in the next three months. So, at the risk of sounding like Cassandra, I'm going to encourage city council to seriously reconsider voting to approve Plum's decision to move forward with all the entitlements in the E.I.R.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker?
Caller with the phone number ending in zero two zero six, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, Susan Hunter, I'm calling on behalf of Housing Human Rights, uh, calling in today about thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-seven.
So you have three minutes, please begin.
Thank you. I, basically, calling in today to say thank you to Kevin De Leon, as one of the previous callers had started to mention, uh, who paid out of pocket to make sure that unhoused women in regards to item number thirty-seven, uh, were able to get shelter in the pouring rain and the cold. Uh, that was really stepping up to the plate, and I hope that that's something that we'll see more out of other council members, to take that lead, to say, you know, you can't always just wait on the system to do the right thing and agendize, and sometimes you have to just stand up and do the right thing. So, thank you for doing that. Uh, thank you so much for the other items that have been introduced to actually try to progress forward and making sure that we're producing affordable housing, uh, which is missing in things like community plans. Uh, and item number thirty-one, my only friendly amendment would be to expand it out to include adaptive reuse so that we can get people housed faster. Uh, we have to do more as a city, and we're not doing enough, and I hope that with some new members coming in, we can, we can do more, because we have to. Uh, we can't keep doing the same thing and think that it will continue to work. Uh, we have to see some progressive new ideas, and we have to make sure that we have affordable housing in our community plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in two nine four seven, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in two nine four seven, please press star six.
Hello?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, I'm speaking on all items. My name is Maggie Pulley, I am an L.A.U.S.D. parent of three children. We live in Council District One, I am also an educator of almost twenty years, who's worked in L.A. Unified. I've seen time and time again UCLA prioritize the needs of teachers at the expense of students. Time and time again, I've seen UCLA policies disproportionately on black, brown, and poor students and not community members.
Speaker, which item are you on? Speaker, which item are you on? Which item are you on, Speaker, I'm confused.
All items.
Uh, which item, I don't think you're speaking to an agenda item. So I think we should go on to the next speaker, 'cause apparently she no longer wants to speak.
Next speaker?
Caller with the phone number ending in eight nine seven nine, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Jonathan Frat, and I would like to speak on all items, especially, I mean, specifically, item thirty.
You have three minutes, go ahead.
Good morning, my name is Jonathan Frat, a freshman and the class hall president from San Pedro Senior High School located in District Fifteen. I am autistic, admitted, and present in the comment I have prepared, so please tap pitches with me. I'm calling in today to comment on the impact of the pandemic and to support the reopening of L.A. Unified schools. I am an autistic student of an IEP, an Individualized Education Program. As a student, I depend on the supportive services in the IEP, including my one-on-one to access the classes and participate in my school community. I worry about my fellow students with exceptional needs, and we continue with distance learning.
So, Speaker, I'm a bit confused what item you're on.
This comment applies to item thirty because I am recommending the approval of this resolution in order to utilize any additional state and federal emergency funding to address the pandemic and reopen our schools. It is my understanding that the county of Los Angeles has allowed for twenty-five percent of the highest need students to return to in-person instruction, but sadly, this has not taken place. My fellow students with exceptional needs require access to resources that cannot be accessed with the funding.
So I think we've moved pretty far off the agenda items, Speaker.
Let the child speak, Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. Buzkayeno.
I implore the city council-
He's not speaking to any, any items on the agenda. You know that, Mr. Buzkayeno.
I implore the city council to support the reopening of schools for students with exceptional needs and other high needs.
Just to be clear, it's not that no one wants you not to speak. You need to speak to an item that's on the agenda.
And I need to treat all of the speakers equally.
That item is not on the agenda. I understand Mr. Buzkayeno is introducing that item that will be agendized, and at that point, you can call in and speak to that item. No one is cutting you off, but you have to speak to the items on the agenda.
Caller, caller with the phone number ending in two five two four, please press star six.
Good morning, Buenos dias. My name is Pete Rodriguez with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I'd like to discuss item number eight and nine.
You have two minutes, please begin.
The twelve-hundred-unit ANI Times Mirror project gives Los Angeles an opportunity to look in the mirror. Previous discussions related to this development, there were comments where Angelenos asked you to stand up for what is right to stand up for the history of the building, a concrete structure. Today, we're asking you to stand up for the essential workforce that will construct this landmark. We must align development with community wealth and community benefits for all Angelenos. An essential workforce deserves to earn a decent living and deserves to have essential benefits that include family healthcare and pension. When we ask that you stand for our essential workforce, we're asking that you stand with a skilled and trained worker with apprenticeship programs, with your constituents. It's the same workforce that has volunteered tens of thousands of hours in our cities dur, in our cities. During recent riots and protests, they even put themselves in harm's way by boarding up windows and securing, securing local businesses in downtown LA. Why has ANI refused to acknowledge our essential workforce? Why have they refused to come to the table and commit to community wealth? We're asking no more business as usual. The time is now to stand up and tell ANI to take a seat and get it worked out with the essential workforce of Los Angeles. If you're going to build in Los Angeles, you must commit to community wealth. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker, and that concludes Speakers for today's agenda. Madam Clerk, just go ahead and vote on the following items. Let's vote on item one through six, items eight through thirty-one, items thirty-four through thirty-six, and items thirty-eight through forty-one.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Kerkorian?
My apologies, but I do have some questions on items eight and nine. I apologize that I wasn't able to call that special earlier, but if we could hold those on the desk for questions?
Eight and nine, okay. Hold on for just a second, sir.
Thank you.
And then, Madam President, if you'd like, council could vote on items one through six, ten through thirty-one, thirty-four through thirty-six, and thirty-eight through forty-one.
Okay, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Vannen.
Vannen, aye.
Buzkayeno.
Aye.
Sidio. Councilmember Sidio. DeLeon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Ramon.
Aye.
Ridley Thomas.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, these items are adopted.
It's a doy, please.
Excuse me, fifteen ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, let's move on to items eight and nine. We can go ahead and take those together, Mr. Kerkorian. If you have any questions, I just want to make sure that the proper staff is in our meeting.
Thank you. So if Planning Department is here?
Let me check. Hold on for just a second.
Thank you.
We're checking, Mr. Kerkorian.
We are gone. Getting dropped by this company.
Do we have someone from the Planning Department? Can you identify yourself?
Um, hi, yes, this is Will Lamborn from Planning. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Mr. Kerkorian, go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much, Madam President. So this has been a project that has been in the works for quite some time. And this is, I think, the first time that the council as a whole has been able to take up the issue about the T-FAR transfer, as well as the CEQA findings. And I, you know, recognize this is a large and important project for downtown Los Angeles. And I want to say in particular that this was a project that was well down the tracks before Mr. DeLeon took office as the representative of CD fourteen, and I know that he has worked very hard to improve this project, to improve the public's benefit that's derived from the project. But I'd like to ask Planning, first of all, under the findings that were required to make, can you walk us through what the council is needing to vote on for the T-FAR transfer and also for the CEQA, on the CEQA vote?
Absolutely. So again, Will Lamborn, Planning Staff. So I'll, I'll start with the CEQA. So before the council for its consideration is an appeal on the projects, second level appeal on the project's vesting tentative tract map on the determination from the City Planning Commission to deny the, for a first level appeal that was filed, was filed on that. And so the certification of the Environmental Impact Report is one of the items before the council for its consideration associated with the item that is the, again, the second level appeal of the subdivision action or the vesting tentative tract map. So that's the CEQA action that's before the council to consider. And then as far as the T-FAR findings, so the applicant is requesting a transfer of five hundred and forty-eight thousand square feet of floor area from the convention center as the donor site to the project site. And so before the council, as far as T-FAR goes, is approving that transfer as well as the allocation of various public benefits per the zoning codes, T-FAR ordinance, in order to qualify for that transfer. And some modifications were made to those proposed public benefit allocations through the Plum Committee and are currently recommended via Plum to include a portion of onsite affordable housing, as well as portions that would go to onsite historic preservation. And the findings associated with T-FAR are also before the council.
Okay, so can you please explain to the council T-FAR is an asset that, an asset of value owned by the city? And in this case, the total value of that city asset is about twenty-four million dollars. Is that right?
Um, yes, that's correct. There is a, a public benefit payment that's associated with the, the T-FAR request, and there's also a transfer payment. And I believe those both combined in total to just under twenty-four million dollars based upon the amount of floor area that the project's requesting, among other factors.
Okay, and so if the previous council member for CD fourteen had asked the developer to use transit-oriented communities rules rather than the T-FAR, what would that have done with regard to the public's interest, in particular with regard to onsite affordable housing?
Um, yeah, absolutely. So it's a, it's a different entitlement and has different requirements. But generally speaking, the project site is located within what would qualify as a tier-four transit-oriented community, communities portion of the city. And within that, under TOC, the projects would, the project would qualify for certain incentives based upon the amount of affordable housing that it provides. Among those incentives, as a base incentive, is an increase in floor area ratio, again, based upon how many affordable units as a, as a proportion of the total number of units the project would provide. So in this instance, the project proposes to provide one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven total dwelling units. TOC provides for three options in terms of qualifying for the incentives. A project could either provide eleven percent extremely low income, fifteen percent very low income, or twenty-five percent low income units, again, based upon the total number of units in the project in order to qualify for various incentives, one of which is a floor area increase, although there are other incentives as well. The project would be eligible if it had been applied for as a TOC project for a forty percent increase in floor area, which would result in a total floor area of approximately one million three hundred and forty-eight thousand square feet. Via T-FAR, the project is proposing a maximum floor area of one million five hundred and eleven thousand square feet. And then in terms of the affordability levels and the number of units based upon those percentages in the TOC guidelines, which I just mentioned, from a total of eleven hundred twenty-seven units, through TOC, the project would, would be required to provide at eleven percent extremely low income would be a hundred and twenty-four units. At fifteen percent very low income would be a hundred and sixty-nine units. And at twenty-five percent low income would be two hundred and eighty-two units out of the total. And the project would need to do, under TOC, the project would need to provide those units at one of those proportional levels in order to qualify for those incentives.
Okay, but instead, because the previous council member for the fourteenth council district negotiated a T-FAR deal, the city is giving up a valuable asset in its T-FAR in exchange for a commitment of eleven units out of one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven that are moderate to low income. Is that right?
Yeah, the, again, Will Lamborn, Planning Staff. The T-FAR is, as an entitlement, is structured differently, in the sense that there's a set of different public benefit categories that an applicant can propose in order to qualify for T-FAR, one of which is affordable housing and there are other categories as well. In this instance, from Plum's recommendation, I believe it would be what is currently proposed and recommended by Plum would be a total of, let me just make sure that I get this right, I think it's twenty-four moderate income units and ten low income units. But let me just double check that I have that number correct. But that's what's currently proposed and recommended by Plum.
Okay. Well, members, for, for many years, many, many years, I've been very concerned about T-FAR being used as a subsidy for downtown development. I continue to think that the city is not getting fair value for its T-FAR concessions to developers downtown. And I, I, I believe that this project doesn't represent the, the public interest. And so I don't feel that I can support the finding that the transfer serves the public interest and that it doesn't provide adequate affordable housing for this project. It doesn't provide the benefits that the voters of the city of Los Angeles approved under JJJ, as it would if it were transit-oriented community development. So I, I, again, want to compliment Mr. DeLeon for trying to take a, a bad deal that he was handed and make it significantly better, which he has done. But I feel that this was a project that should have had more public benefit built in from the very beginning, and it doesn't. So I'll be a no vote.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on these two items. Item eight and nine, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld.
Up, Blumenfeld, aye.
Well, Madam Chair, I apologize. Can, can I just add one thing very quickly?
Mr. DeLeon, coger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, I do appreciate, you know, Mr. Kerkorian's line of questioning and be very clear. With regards to the 2040 downtown LA vision that is coming in the near future, affordability is going to be a cornerstone when it comes to downtown LA. I want to thank all the folks at Plum, our chair of Plum for his hard work, the Planning Commission as well. There's one thing that I think is important, I understand, is that this project has been in the pipeline for three years, and without doubt, to underscore Mr. Kerkorian's perspective, or not perspective, but, but a, a fact, I inherited this project and trying to make it as best project as possible. There have been nine T-FAR projects that the vast majority of council members have voted for with zero affordability. This project actually is a departure from the nine past T-FAR projects that you all have voted for, minus just a, a small handful of individuals here that actually has affordability into it. I would love to have much more affordability, trust me. But we've had nine projects, T-FAR, zero affordability. This is the first one that is a significant departure, which I, we get lemons and we make lemonade with it. And I think I just want to really underscore that, given, I'm not a fan of T-FAR. And I agree with Paul Kerkorian. I got what I got, and we put affordability, when again, to underscore every single project that's come before, the city council has had no affordability. Thank you much, Madam President.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and call to vote on item eight and nine.
All right, could, could I ask a question as well here?
Sure.
I just wanted to ask about, you know, what are the implications of voting no on this, given that T-FAR is part of the development regulations of the city? You know, is there a response to frustrations around this particular set of rules that would involve actually changing those guidelines versus voting no on a project that has moved forward according to the existing guidelines of the city? I'm kind of curious about your approach on that. Councilmember Kerkorian. It feels like this project has come out through an existing set of rules that you're arguing is not appropriate for the goals that we're setting for the city, which I, I think I agree with. But would the appropriate response be to then start the process of changing those incentives that we've put into our planning code right now?
Personally, I believe it would be, and I think to Mr. DeLeon's point, the history of the use of T-FAR has been not a proud one. And I, I would welcome the opportunity to have that discussion. That's, that's not agendized today, so it's merely a matter of, of making the finding. And I just, I don't feel comfortable with making that finding.
Mr. Blumenfeld.
Thank you. I, I, I mean-
Thank you. I, I mean, certainly, I share Mr. Kocorian's concerns about T-FAR, although having seen this come through Plum Committee with Mr. DeLeon and how he's worked to make this better under our existing system, I appreciate that. Of course, I would love it, you know, a better way to go is, we actually had a PLA on this, on this project that would help it quite a bit. But I don't see how we insert that in at this moment. And so that's why, you know, I'm sort of reluctantly going with Mr. DeLeon to move this forward under our existing rules, even though I have concerns, have expressed the concerns, and would much rather see more affordable housing and importantly, PLAs on these kinds of projects. And I don't know if that's possible to put that in, but that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Mr. Sadio.
Madam Chair, thank you. As Mr. DeLeon noted, this is something he inherited. This gives us a great opportunity to reassess and reevaluate how we build not just downtown, but the entirety of the city. I agree with Bob Blumenfeld, it would be nice to have a PLA. And so how do we do this? I'm going to bring forward a motion at some point soon to amend the downtown plan, to make sure that the downtown plan has local hire, to make sure that then that creates an opportunity for people to work on these high rises that don't drive in from Orange County or Santa Clarita or the Inland Empire, but actually who live in the downtown area of the city. And so that's one of the ways to do it, but it's, this is a, you know, we're building this plane as we were trying to fly it and land it. And so Mr. DeLeon has tried to make the best lemonade, as weak as it may taste, best lemonade he can out of a sack full of dried lemons. I think we need to respect that. He has brought to this position some skills and focus to help change the direction of this district. I think we need to respect that, and I will vote for this project, but with the understanding that there, we're all aware of the things that we need to do to change the direction of development in the city and to make sure that everyone can be and will be housed in the city as we go forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank Mr. Kocorian for raising important questions about this very, very big and significant project. Also, I will note that that other committee members, namely Mr. Ridley Thomas, raised issues at the time that this item came through. So I want to make a note of that and applaud them for it. You know, I'd humbly request that we, Madam Chair, Mr. DeLeon, and others, if they're amenable to it, that we bring this back to committee for more discussion. It seems like it's far too important a project and far too important an issue to do with this, these kinds of questions looming. Again, as important as, as large as the issue is, and as important as the issue of affordable housing is in the city at this time. There frankly isn't a more important issue that we have. This is a significant iconic project. So I think it would be better and wiser to take the time to revisit this, give Mr. DeLeon and the committee members even more time, and the developers more time to come up with something that causes less discomfort and raises less appropriate scrutiny.
Mr. Harris Dawson, the last day to act on this item is tomorrow.
Madam, Madam, Madam President, I'd like to just call the question so we can move forward with the vote.
I can't hear you, Mr. DeLeon. Say that one more time.
Madam President, I'd like to call the question so we can move forward on the vote.
Okay, the question's been called. Go ahead, let's go ahead and take the roll on items eight and nine. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Blumenfeld.
I.
Bonin.
Madam President, I'm sorry, is this a motion on the floor to call the question or to send it back to committee?
The question has been called to vote on the items, items eight and nine.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Beginning roll call, Councilmember Blumenfeld was an aye. Councilmember Bonin.
Councilmember Bonin, Mr. Kocorian was pretty compelling. I'm a no vote.
For the record, that was a no. Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio. DeLeon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Kirkorian.
No.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
No.
Price.
Aye.
Ramen.
Aye.
For the record, that was aye.
Yes.
Thank you. Ridley Thomas.
No.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
11 ayes and four noes. These items are adopted. The ordinance will be held over one week for a second reading.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move on to item 32. This was amended by Mr. DeLeon and seconded by Mr. Buscaino. So let's vote on item 32 as amended. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio. DeLeon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Kirkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price. Ramen.
Aye.
Ridley Thomas.
Aye.
Ridley Thomas. For the record, Councilmember Ridley Thomas is an aye.
15 ayes, this item is adopted as amended.
Okay, let's move on to item 33. Mr. Price has requested to recuse himself on item 33, so let's go ahead and take him off the board. Okay, let's go ahead and call the roll on item 33.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
DeLeon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Kirkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price recused. Ramen.
Aye.
Ridley Thomas.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
14 ayes, this item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item number seven. There's been a request by Mr. Kocorian to recuse himself on this item. Please take him off the board. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
DeLeon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Kirkorian recused. Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Ridley Thomas.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
And Councilmember Price.
13 ayes, this item is adopted.
Clerk, what's before us now?
And for the record, Council President, on item eight and nine, those items were adopted. There is no ordinance to be held over, though. Thank you.
Thank you. What's before us?
Madam President, Council has motions for posting and referral. Motions will be posted on the City Clerk's website shortly after the meeting for the public's viewing. To subscribe to receive copies of today's council motions to your email, please visit clerk.lacity.org.
Okay, posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? See none. Any adjourned motions? Any adjourned motions, Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I believe this first one is one that you would be inclined to join along with me. Colleagues, I ask today that we adjourn in the memory of Joe Lozano. Joe Lozano was an incredible force, a native of Pacoima, one of 10 children in his family. Most often referred to and called Pinoy, Joe was a hard worker and had every job you can imagine. As a young boy, he started shining shoes and worked in the fields, picking everything, including cotton. He joined the United States Marine Corps in 1954, ascended to the rank of sergeant, and served during the Korean War. His military occupational specialty was infantry flamethrower. After the service, Joe married the love of his life, Virginia, who preceded him in death. They were married for 60 years, and had six children, 21 grandchildren, 26 great-grandchildren, and one great-great-grandchild. Joe was a very community-oriented person. His family, after his family, his love for his community was his priority, and he was a proud resident of Mission Hills. Council District 7 began receiving a number of proactive, community-related calls from Joe beginning in 98. He painted over graffiti, organized community cleanups on Brand Boulevard, and even maintained the landscaping on the median. He was a frequent participant in the Neighborhood Council, CPAB, and our Veterans Day and summer movie night events. Joe worked as a prop maker for the studios for many years. He had tons of stories and he loved his job. When he retired, he went back to work and only stopped again to care for his wife, Virginia, when she became ill. Joe loved his country, loved his family, and loved his community. He will be greatly missed by his community, its children, grandchildren, great-grandchild, great-grandchildren, and great-great-grandchild, and friends. May he rest in peace.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Madam President.
Ms. Rodriguez, I really am in shock. I had no idea Joe had passed away. I have so much memories with him. He often would call on me and my husband to paint over graffiti or to complain about certain things that weren't being done in his neighborhood, but it was always because he loved, loved, loved our community so much. And oftentimes, we just didn't know how he found the time to devote to all these projects he had all the time. I'm speechless. I don't know what to say. I had no idea he had passed away, but I would love to join you in adjourning in his memory. I know he lost his wife, you know, I want to say about a year and a half ago, two years ago, that Virginia passed. And I try to keep in touch with him, but I know that he was having a really difficult time after she had passed away. They were very close. They did a lot of things together. And them as a couple were just so cute. I remember, they joined the Las Palmas Senior Club with my parents, and I would often see them at events or at their monthly dances where they all used to hang out and dance till all hours of the night. And they were just, you know, a happy couple that, like I said, they did so much together. So I appreciate you bringing this forward. I extend my condolences to his children and to his grandkids. And Joe was a good guy. Thank you. Mr. Blumenfeld?
Yeah, I wanted to add on, Mr. Rodriguez, what happened. I've known Joe 20 years when I worked, used to work for Howard Berman. He was an original founder. We were on the original parade committee to start the Veterans Day Parade years ago, and he's just, was an amazing guy. So please add me onto that.
Of course, Bob. And, you know, and look, Joe was, he was very direct about what needed to happen, and it was out of a tremendous source of pride and for his, and love of his community. And, you know, it's sad. He's, my godfather is, was, they were, it's my godfather's brother-in-law. And Pinoy has been, you know, just in, just in terms of the presence in the family, they celebrated his 85th birthday recently with everyone and did a, one of the drive-by birthday celebrations for him. But, you know, what a blessing to have been described as having to have his passing surrounded by his children. And, you know, that's probably the greatest blessing of all, but happy to have you both on there. Thank you. And, Madam President, I do have two additional adjourned motions.
Sure, go ahead.
Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Nora Hamper, who passed away on February 3rd, 2021. Nora, or Sham, as she was called by her family, was born to John and Lillian Baker on November 29th, 1934, in Fresno, California. Nora met Herb Terzag, a young college student from USC at an Armenian dance. They married in 1956 and established a home in Los Angeles. Nora worked as an executive secretary in the aerospace industry and buyer of electronic parts for airplanes. In 1970, Herb and Nora opened a furniture store in Gardena, later adding stores in Torrance, Manhattan Beach. And after a long, successful career, they retired and especially enjoyed volunteering at the Ararat Home in Mission Hills. Sadly, Herb died unexpectedly in 1989. Nora kept busy working diligently for the Ararat Home, using her eye for interior design to furnish the assisted living and skilled nursing facilities, as well as the beautiful Dymasian Ballroom. She also enjoyed chairing numerous Ararat Home banquets and dinners. She was very active for many years in the ladies auxiliary of the Western Diocese of the Armenian Church, and participated in many of its events and debutante balls. In 2000, Nora married Armin Hamper, a widower and a friend who was also extremely involved at the Ararat Home. Together, they had worked on the board, traveled and attended countless banquets and events. They hosted a number of charitable functions at their Toluca Lake home, as well as many family dinners. She is survived by her brother Jerry, his wife Melda, and his family, her nephew Jason Alalian, and Amy Davis, her nieces Stacy Baker, Michelle, and Dennis Surubian, and their children. She is also survived by Steve and Sandy Hamper, and Audrey and Matt Madowassian, and their children. In lieu of flowers, memorial contributions can be made to the Ararat Home of Los Angeles, St. Peter Armenian Church, or Young Life Armenia. May she rest in peace. And colleagues, sadly, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Armin Hamper, who passed away on September 20th, September 24th, excuse me, 2020. Armin was born on November 26th, 1931, in New York, to Alice and Vahhe Hamper. After graduating from Columbia University, he enrolled at the U.S. Coast Guard Academy, and in 1954 was commissioned as an officer of the Coast Guard in Savannah, Georgia. In 1966, Armin's job at Witco Chemical Company brought the family to Southern California. The transfer from New York to Los Angeles was supposed to be temporary. However, Armin partnered with two coworkers to purchase a nearly defunct company. From 1968 until the company was sold in 1998, Armin From nineteen sixty-eight until the company was sold in nineteen ninety-eight, Armin was the co-owner of a company which grew to become the largest independent blender-packager of its kind on the West Coast. Armin was extremely proud of the Ararat Home of Los Angeles, where he served twice as chairman of the Board of Trustees and also chaired several committees. He remained an active board member until his passing. He was a fifty-five-year member of the Knights of Vartan Seven Lodge. He also was a forty-year member and past master of the Trex Fraternity Los Angeles Chapter. Armin's compassionate spirit and his desire to strengthen the Armenian holy apostolic church earned him the love and respect of the clergy, his fellow parishioners, and the entire faithful community. With his humble service and compassionate personality, he set an example for the young generation and his children who continue their involvement in the life of the Armenian Church. A benefactor and philanthropist in the truest sense of the word, Armin envisioned a vibrant and more prosperous Armenian-American community. He is survived by his son Steve, his daughter Audrey, five grandchildren, his sister Lita, his brother Gary, cousins, nieces, and nephews. May he rest in peace.
Mr. De Leon?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, please join me in adjourning in the memory today of Joan Stern, the beloved wife of a very good friend, Bob Stern, who died just a few weeks ago, last month, January twenty-fifth, after struggling with cancer. I think a lot of folks know who Bob Stern is, who's been a fixture in California politics, the former president of the Center for Governmental Studies and the co-author of California's Political Reform Act. We worked together on corruption in the state of Vernon, but his wife Joan, who passed just last month, was a poet. She was a French teacher. She was administrator at the Getty. She was the director of the International House at the University of California at Davis. She was a business consultant, and she was incredibly proud mother of her son Ryan. And she was an aficionado of Shakespeare, a world traveler, and a Renaissance woman. To the, all of the Stern family, again, to my good friend Bob Stern, I adjourn in the memory of Joan Stern. Our deepest condolences to Bob and Ryan, who's a sound engineer at Disney. With that, thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Corretts?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Ed Pearl, who from nineteen fifty-eight to nineteen seventy-three made the Ash Grove Music Club on Melrose an international center for American and Latin American music. While attending UCLA in the nineteen fifties, he got his start in presenting musical performances, which later transitioned into the founding of the Ash Grove. During the club's main run, he presented the cream of the country's folk, bluegrass, blues, folk-rock, and country-rock performers. And the club informally was known as the West Coast University of Folk Music. Notables such as Ry Cooter, Taj Mahal, Roger McGuinn, and Jackson Brown hung out there or did their first performances there, and Mick Jagger would visit to hear great blues music whenever he was in town. The list of important performers who played in the Ash Grove is way too long to go far into, but I'll just mention Pete Seeger, Muddy Waters, Johnny Cash, and Ravi Shankar to give you the barest idea of what Ed brought to the local music scene. The Ash Grove was destroyed by fire in nineteen seventy-three and became more of a floating musical concept on the way, all the way to the present day. Ed produced special concerts for charity and innumerable causes, including several notable all-star tributes to the legacy of the Ash Grove. He also briefly reopened the club on the Santa Monica Pier during the nineteen nineties. Ed was also an important player in LA's progressive political scene, helping to get the Peace and Freedom Party and the People's College of Law both off the ground. He was also prominent in progressive causes in Venice and other LA communities for many years. Ed Pearl was a force of nature and intellect who made LA a better, richer place during his eighty-plus years. He passed away sadly on this past Sunday of COVID-19, and he will be sorely missed.
Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. Members, I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of longtime Wilmington resident and faithful friend and community leader Beatrice June Chow, who passed away due to COVID-related pneumonia on January ninth, nineteenth. Born in the Philippines, she came to California at age six with her mother and father. She'd be, will be fondly remembered for her heavy involvement in PTA at her children's elementary school, serving in the number of board positions, including president. In nineteen seventy-two, she received an honorary service award for her PTA activity beyond the call of duty, including service at the LAPD community meetings. She served on the Asian American Commission for Education, sacrificing time away from family in hopes of improving educational opportunities for her children and grandchildren. I had the honor to work alongside June, as she was one of the founding members of Harbor Lights, which stands for Ladies Involved in Time in Service. They were our amazing women auxiliary group that helped LAPD officers here at the Harbor area during the holidays. It would make sure that those officers working during the holidays would be, won't be forgotten, and they were, provide the decorations at the police station and provide food for the police officers, particularly during the holiday seasons. And she's been recognized for her fifty years of community spirit, hard work, and dedication to the LAPD Harbor Division. She'll truly be missed. Her services will be held this Thursday, eleven AM, February eleventh, at the Portal de la Paz tent in Whittier, California. Our hearts go out to June, her family, her friends, her colleagues at Harbor Lights. If you'd like to contribute to the organization, Harbor Lights, on her behalf, the family would be more than happy to afford your contribution to Harbor Lights. Beatrice June Chow, may she rest in peace. Thank you.
Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to raise my hand in time. I just wanted to thank Ms. Rodriguez for her beautiful tribute to Nora and Armin Hampar, who were longtime personal friends of me and my family. This was a couple that contributed so much to all of Southern California, virtually every cause that impacted the Armenian-American community. They were there quietly, humbly in support. They were a couple that was always kind to everyone, always generous, always thoughtful, really the kind of couple that makes an enormous difference in our city. Certainly, they were strong supporters of the Ararat Home in Ms. Rodriguez's district. They and their family were prominent members of the Toluca Lake community in Ms. Ramon's district. They touched people throughout our city through the philanthropic and charitable work that they, that they did. And they were incredible people, and I'd just like to ask if I could join Ms. Rodriguez in that beautiful tribute that she gave, recognizing their lifetime of achievement for not only the Armenian-American community, but all of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. Any other adjourning motions? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.